All right, it's six o'clock. We're gonna get started with the Mount Pleasant City Commission Regular Meeting Thursday, July the 16th. I'm gonna ask Bedford if you would do the pledge and Robert Archibald would do the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's correct. I've got to be coming to you this afternoon, Lord, and we're so thankful for this day that you've given to us. Thank you for the many blessings you supplied our lives daily, Father. We ask as we enter to this meeting, Father, that it benefit this community, all the residents here in Mount Pleasant, and that all good things come from this meeting tonight. We give you thanks and praise in your Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, gentlemen. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Granby. Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Ms. Blankenship.
Here.
And Mr. Smith.
Here.
Forward, present, we have a form.
Okay. Next, we have approval or correction of minutes from prior meetings, and we have two here, so...
Mayor, members, commissioners, I put at your desk there on the June 18th meeting that one change is that we had that Cory was present and we all know that she was on vacation. So if you, when you're making your motion, if you're approving the corrected ones, that'd be great. So you've got two, the special call and that June 18th meeting.
Correct. Entertain a motion after everybody's had an opportunity to review it.
I'll sit early and have read over them, and I'll make a motion when we accept the minutes with the changes.
Have a motion, we have a second. Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Awards, presentations, or affirmments? Have none, right, Kate?
None. This month, we've had a whole bunch of last few.
A whole bunch of last few, which is good.
Yeah.
That reminds me, we need to think about that young lady again about doing something special.
Katie Bozeman, yeah.
All right, completion, review of unfinished business from prior meeting? None?
None.
Monthly report from the mayor? I don't have anything this month, other than being thanks for everything everybody's doing here at City Hall. It's good for us. Monthly financial budget report, Loretta?
Good evening. As you know, in June, we do not have a normal report as such because the June report will be in the form of the audited financial statements that will be presented by the auditor in December.
Correct.
What I do have are preliminary cash balances, and again, we're not through completed balancing all the accounts, so those, these are subject to change, although they should change, it should be minor.
Right.
Usually it's a matter of interest or things being recorded in the wrong account and that kind of thing. The preliminary reports do show that the balances are steady and the general fund has 1,891,000. The gas fund has a little over 3.6 million, and the operating water fund has 1,050,000. And the total of the all-water account of 1,650,000, this does exclude the customer deposit accounts that are kept separately. We do have a couple of things to announce. As you've been promising for, what, three years now, that we're going to be converting up to the new utility billing that state has been set. The software vendor will be here on the afternoon after closing hours of August the 1st. Well, actually, they will be in our server. They won't physically be here, but they'll be loading things down off our server off site. And then on August the 2nd, they will continue that. That day, we've put notices around town in the, here in City Hall, that we will not be able to have, to conduct any transactions on the server.
That'll be Friday, Friday the 2nd.
There will be no, we could accept payments if somebody has their bill in hand, but we won't be able to look up anything, we won't be able to make any transactions, and any transactions, any bills that are paid will not be dated until that following Monday. But at that point, cutoff will already be over, and the due date for the new bills, for that month's bills for August will not be till the 15th. So if somebody's not dated the 2nd versus the 5th, that's not gonna, that's not gonna make a big difference. They'll still be timely payments, so we shouldn't have any kind of, as far as that goes, any kind of...
Will it be back if they're running on Monday?
They're supposed to be having it up Monday. They will be working all weekend on it.
We sure hope so.
We're supposed to be, you know how it goes.
Scheduled to be.
Scheduled to be, yes.
When does the bank tell us about them? Monday, Friday, Saturday?
Yeah. So hopefully, we'll have all that. I know that that was kind of the same procedure we went through when we converted the general ledger system and the payroll, and I think there'll be a lot of kinks and bugs to work out, we know that.
It always is.
Yeah, always is. You're not gonna get through it without having something happen.
But when it gets to the end of it, it'll be better for all of us.
This is not, this is just something that came up today, and I said you'd bring it up. When we go back online to this and set it up, I'm sure there'll be some changes with payments and things, but can you put something in the billing to remind people they can do this automatically? They can pay their bill, have it paid automatically?
Actually, there's a tab to pay it. A tab that says that it takes so many days to clear.
Okay.
Yeah. But if you go on there and it's not clear, you tell us, because we need to check.
But it's, just put a little blurb in there saying to the customers, remind them of the bill.
Oh, on the bill?
On the bill. I had two people today, two different places, and they were frantic when they realized it was the 16th and hadn't paid their water bill. And I said, well, you can have it done automatically. They haven't, after two times, saying you've cut my off.
We can put that little message thing, and it's not read by most, but we can sure try that. I mean, we're looking at possibly going to a larger bill, like the power system, where you can have a bigger message and even issue the paper. Right now, we have like maybe 20 digits that we can do, but we'll do that. We encourage people if they come in, or we talk to them.
Thank you.
Auto-date it. Way to go.
And we do have, and we will, we'll be looking at some other, the new system will afford us some other opportunities in the future. We don't wanna do too much at one time, but some other opportunities may present itself to make things more convenient for our customers and easier for us to see. And one change that we may be looking at down the road would be, right now, the way the online works is that at midnight, midnight, that a file is created and it's sent to the credit card processing company. So whatever balance, whatever is on that account, it's what, that's what they see at that point. It's not live at that point, and so we're hoping that at some point, that we're able to be able to go live with that, so that if anytime somebody looks at their bill, that that's what is truly on there, and it's not a few hours old. Or in the case of Friday, it's probably a couple, you know, it's a day or two old.
Well, the good news is we're gonna have a new system. It's gonna be more up-to-date, it's gonna be more user-friendly.
Yeah, I think it's a long time coming, I think it's a love of yours.
We're finally getting it going. Any other questions for Loretta?
Thank you, sir.
Entertain a motion.
So, do we accept the report is presented for the budget?
Second, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from city manager?
I don't have a specific monthly report, but they say the city is available already for June, and then, I mean, July, I'm sorry, and then August will be available first of the month, online and emailed and at the lobby, for anybody.
Thanks for doing that. It's nice, this one, it's a nice-looking piece. Number 10, special reports from other city departments or committees, if applicable.
Mayor and commissioners for both wastewater liaison and Mount Pleasant Gas, there really is not a report. We're getting bills from engineers on the wastewater project, so that's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
That means that it's...
That's a good thing.
That means they're putting the pen to paper and they're designing the wastewater system, so we're well on our way there.
That is good news. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to, just for the record, that Ms. Granby is here.
Yeah, if you don't mind, please have Ms. Granby's in. All right, number 11, new business. A, ordinance 2019-1039, an ordinance amending water and sewer rates and charges for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, set forth in Schedule A, 618-125 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Act.
Mayor and commissioners, this is in front of you again, because we realized that in our Schedule A with the last passage in 2016 and '17, we didn't specifically have the residential outside corporate city limit rate, which we've had for many, many, many years, passed by resolution by previous administrations, going back, the last couple that we found on record, haven't looked too much further back, are 2009 and 2013. So we wanna make sure everything's on the same document.
In a light back, we're doing it with an ordinance?
An ordinance, that we'll have a public hearing in August, and the only change is that were actually made when we did this in December was rounding the numbers to even numbers for the minimum monthly charges, and that was actually done in December, but it's just mirroring that in this ordinance.
Okay, good.
And there were a couple more, just changes in wording to try to make things a little more clear.
Okay.
I didn't make a comparison this time.
She went back to, back in 2009, when they addressed every single system, like Watts Hill, Johnson Hill, all the different, and we're just saying outside the city.
Consolidating into one.
Yeah.
Right.
And there's a note about like Mount Joy Road, or Mount Joy Project, that was under, you know, contract with the state.
That's right, absolutely right.
And then, there was a transfer fee that was listed in the last ordinance, which we took out.
It's under current practice.
Yeah, yeah. And the, there was some confusion about the reconnection fee, and so that's been the wording.
Trying to clarify.
I don't think the, anything's actually changed, it's just, it's more clear when you read it.
Trying to be, at least.
Yeah, trying to be. If it's not, you know, let us know.
Right.
We'll take the...
Yeah, we've got until August to get this looked at. Everybody, please take some time, and if you've got any comments on it, please get them to Kate, and then Kate will pile them and get them all of them. Cory at one time, that worth everybody?
Mm-hmm. I think that's the only, only changes, is that right?
Yep.
All right, we'll entertain a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance 2019-1039 of the water and sewer rates for city of Mount Pleasant.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2019-22, a resolution by the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, declaring certain Mount Pleasant Police Department inventory as surplus property and authorizing the sale of this surplus property.
Mayor, commissioners, are you used to this, and I would do it quite often, once the property stays with us, this is the military purchases, as long as they need to, we're surpleasing it and putting on gun deals. And I think there's two pieces of equipment on this particular resolution.
Okay. Yeah, I think it was a Polaris and a...
Both razors, right?
Both razors. All right, any questions regarding that? We see this very regular, as Kate says. Being none, entertain a motion.
I entertain a motion. We accept 2019-22, consider it self-surplus.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. C, I think you said you wanted to defer, correct?
We would like to bring that back up in August and fine tune what we're looking at right now for June.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kate, now discuss this today, this is the new planning.
It's gonna include the 3%, cost of living, and a few other things, and just some minor changes, but I wanna make sure we've done it, we've done it right.
Yeah, let's get it right, and it's, this is something that's not just pressing, we've got another 30 days, get this right.
Can we make a motion to defer?
Yes. And this is to defer, please, whoever likes a motion.
In August is fine.
I'll make a motion, we defer to Resolution 2019-23. Do we defer it till August?
August is fine. We're closed on...
Our August meeting.
Yeah, our August meeting.
We actually, Kate's done a great job, or whomever group has, we got...
But it just goes without saying, it's just...
It really doesn't affect anybody's pay, it's their ranges.
Ranges.
It's the ranges here.
Correct. Which we've needed for years, and now have. All right, we have the motion and a second, and we defer that till August. D?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Who seconded it? I didn't hear who seconded it. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. D, Resolution 2019-24, a resolution approving residential lease agreement for city of real property located at 209 Bond Street, and you have been provided a copy of that lease.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, as you know, we now own the property at 209 Bond Street, and there's gonna be a corrected copy, because we did not know that the side that is, I guess, would be on the northwest side, actually, I had an address of 2013. So the tenant will, it will have that address. She's been a good tenant for a long time, she knows that we have a use for this building going forward, but this is a six-month lease at the same rent that she's been paying. The agreement has always been that we, that we, the owner pays the water and she pays the electric. We're just continuing and memorializing and writing, because she had no written lease with the homeowner, property owners. So this is a six-month lease, and after that, it is 30 months notice, 30...
30 days.
30 days notice to end the lease.
This, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just, we already received the July grant and just told her that this would be a very friendly arrangement, and as soon as we knew when we needed her out, then we'd get her out.
And this gives us some time to memorialize exactly what we wanna do with that property, to include build out that type of...
We're looking into grants, right now.
And what we may be able to get to help us build this out and do some of the things that I think we're all kind of, we're all in favor of.
We have in the budget to go ahead and get started right away on outside stuff that needs to be done, like windows and gutters and things, and we'll be doing that, and that will not bother her.
Right.
I just wanted to have something in writing.
Aye, of course.
I think you have the real lease that's in front of you, but what you got in the packet was just the summary.
That's correct.
The only difference between the summary and the lease that's in front of you is like she said, the deck, the address was wrong.
Okay.
And then my summary had a 10% late fee, and the actual lease had a 5% late fee.
Oh, this one has a 10%. This is correct.
Yes.
Maybe this is correct.
Yeah, right here. Yeah, you should have a complete, a correct copy of the lease, I'm having computer troubles on Friday.
I have that every day.
[laughing].
But it's not because of the computer.
Self-inflicted?
It's what's on the other end of that computer, which is probably...
No, it's just because of the computer.
All right, any other questions for Cory or Kate on this? I think it's finished filled out pretty well. If it's not, I'll entertain a motion.
Basically, the motion is to give me permission to sign the lease.
That's correct.
I'll make that motion, that we accept Resolution 2019-24, which gives Kate, city manager, permission to sign the residential lease on the property on Bond Street.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E, Resolution 2019-25, a resolution calling for approval and implementation...
Oh, thank you.
Good, good, good.
Thank you very much.
Resolution 2019-25, a resolution calling for approval and implementation of a communication committee, and I'll speak to this briefly, and then let Kate take over. This is something that I have felt like is needed, just simply because of the fact we don't, other than our own website and other things that we've got, we're, it's just found difficult to get the communication out to the folks, and what I thought was the best way to do this is to have each commissioner give us to folks that they'd like to serve on it. We'll meet about quarterly.
As needed?
Or as needed, probably initially quarterly, just to get, so we get some communication out, and this is set up so that quarterly or whenever it's needed, we'll have the folks come in, and we'll sit down and we'll discuss what's going on within the city, and then ask them to communicate that information back out to the constituents, so that we get the clear message, and it's not getting muddled up through the channels and things that need to come through, so... Kate, you got anything to add to that?
So basically, the plan, Mayor and Commissioners, is similar to some other boards that we've created, is new boards or committees, is that will approve this resolution, if you've all seen it, I think Cory's done a really good job outlining what the purpose of it is, and then we can at a later date appoint the members of that, once we have all the feedback from each of you as commissioners. So I would recommend that you move forward, just approving the resolution, and then we'll go ahead and...
Then we'll get the names. Mr. Bedford, I think, you're the only one that has names.
Yeah, we're trying to clear, probably one of these would be okay, we've not got that yet.
Yeah, and please, yeah, make sure you do that, because we don't want somebody that doesn't want to serve in that role.
It's like it's important that these people actually come into contact with a lot of local people, so I have two that I believe will do the, and we're giving okay, that has not yet.
Okay, good. We'll get that to next, see if that's probably...
Yes, sir.
All right, great, thank you. All right, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution 2019-25, that we'll approve and implementation of a communication committee.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chief Hines, any general comments from citizens? Got it signed up? First, we got Mr. Jimmy Hines. Jimmy, if you don't mind, please come forward and state your full name and your address, please, sir.
Jimmy Hines, most people know me, I'm living on 100 Brookside. This is, I'm just tired of picking them up out of the yard, and to me, it's no difference in them throwing them in the, of course, y'all know what this is, this is the bag you get.
And advertising them.
And to me, it's no difference in, of course, I mow grass up and down Main Road, Main Road through town, and I pick them up every Wednesday, or every day after Wednesday. Sometimes they look like this, sometimes they don't. Sometimes they're that flat and weigh about five or six pounds apiece, I give you the sound.
Across the tile plant, there's a little house, red gillamones, I know it.
I went up there a couple weeks ago, there were two men in the driveway, were flat as a board, just muddy, wet, picked them up, went and mowed the grass, come back to leave the property, and them, they wanted another man in the driveway. So, to me, it's just misery, and I think y'all be stopped all over town. I've tried to call them, my wife's called them, Mike's called them twice, Kate's called them, Jack's called them. They're no better than, they're no better than we are, I am.
And Mr. Hines has been in here a lot of times, so the most recent is that the best we can do is the police department, my understanding is cite, and it would be the delivery person that you cite, for litter, but I mean, I agree with him, that it's just basically trash. I called the Herald, they have no interest in stopping it.
Well, see, they used to mail. I talked to the mail, I talked to the mail, they used to mail them, and they got so tight, they're not mailing them now, they're just throwing them, throwing them away.
Yeah, it used to be.
And my mother used to deliver those books, yellow books. They just go around throwing them, throwing them out, they just getting rid of them.
Out in the driveway.
Yeah, and we got, our town's looking good, we got the garbage cans, and took care of our garbage problem, which I'm totally in favor of, and then they, but it's like they ignore us, just like, it's kind of disrespectful, I think, you know, that we can't be heard, and so...
Chief Hines, have you talked to the Herald?
I've called them twice, I've actually asked them to leave his entire street off.
But I think they'll be left off the whole town, not just my stuff.
My neighbor brings all of the neighbor's dog, brings us to my yard.
My neighbor's dog won't out of here. I don't know, I don't know if we have any say-so to tell them to stop it, I mean, so these are not, they're not going to gift people that subscribe to the Herald.
No, no, they're not.
No, they're going to everybody. I think their baby tried to get a pardon, too. Who are they giving?
Coming from the Herald, the daily Herald is being paid for the ads.
Every Tuesday, it's got the date on it.
It has all the ads, the reason they do it, it's the ads that, for people who don't get the paper, those are the Wednesday ads that are in the paper, all the grocery ads and the other ads, that's what that is. And it might have one or two news articles in it.
And I'm in favor of the paper, I, you know, a lot of people got rid of the paper, but I still take the paper, mainly because it's got a crossword puzzle in it. But anyway, you know, I'm in favor of the paper, I just think it's, that they don't have any, the Chinese record can't throw them out, can't throw her stuff out on the street, I can't throw my stuff out on the street, and I just think, you know, just something needs to be done about it.
I'll make a phone call. I'm not making any promises whatsoever, because I know a lot of people have tried to address this.
Well, let me ask you this, what can I do as an individual lawyer? Can I? What I'm getting at is, if we can't do nothing about them, what can you do about me? If I throw my garbage in your driveway?
I can cite you.
Why can't we cite them?
We can.
No, Michael will.
I know, but why can't we do something? If we, if we can't do nothing to stop them, what's to stop me?
They'd have to catch them in the act and do that. I think you talked to Michael about that, haven't you?
I've talked to him.
But you're citing the delivery person and not the person who's supplying, and I realize that is the number of people you're...
But surely, Mr. Bennett's not gonna leave somebody out the driveway that they're paying to. I don't know, I don't know. All I'm saying is...
Uh-huh.
If, if, all I'm saying is, is if you can't stop them, I don't see how you can stop anybody from doing...
But it's worth looking into, see, and I think, I agree with you, enough people fuss about it.
Jimmy, I'll address it, I'll do all I can, but I'm, again, I'm not gonna make promises on something that I know a lot of other people have tried to address and have done everything.
Oh, I understand, but I'm saying...
But I will make a promise.
Somebody, somewhere, at some point in time, got to take responsibility for it, and, and they're, if they keep, what's the difference in that, is somebody painting graffiti on my house, it's a crime.
Jimmy, I'm not gonna disagree with you whatsoever, but I will address it and do all I can. And I understand your frustration. I get it, my driveway, and it's picked up and thrown in the garbage, that's right where it goes. And, and I get it, because the driveway down, they're scattered everywhere.
Well, if we don't get, you know, anyway, I appreciate what Mike's done and what Kate's done. Hey, I'm pro-city.
I know you are.
To you, I think you could get letters to the editor, written.
Well, I'm gonna put it on Facebook, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, you'll have your mic put on.
In all seriousness, you could get a petition started and...
Oh, I can do that like that.
Well, then do that.
Well, I'm not smart enough to do Facebook.
Sarah can do that, but you could do the petition.
Along with communication, but beyond that, I'd like comment on the communication. We've, I've been pushing communication, or trying to, or a lot of people, not just me, That's the reason we have a monthly report. You know, we had a, we had a communication committee at one time. And some good things come out of it, some, some didn't, some of them didn't get done, some, like, some of them did get done. Like the dog park, the beginnings of the dog park started back then. And I think communications is very important, which segues me into, if you can get a grant or some corporate sponsor or something, I think a community center needs a sign. So there's something, Thomas was telling me, they don't, my wife and I are going to have a class reunion. And they went over to get a date. Well, heck, it's booked up all the way out, you know. And there's stuff going on over there every weekend that I drive by that don't know what's there that I might would take part in. We just need a sign, some kind of...
Brief report.
Yeah, yeah, because we could, I mean, it's, and you could communicate things that's going to happen like Facebook.
I know, it's a good idea.
John Hatcher has the prices on that.
Yeah, John Hatcher.
John Hatcher has the...
Well, we looked into it back then, that community, that's part of the community.
I'm going to delegate in Dolores, would you give your part correct?
So, anyway.
What would you do since y'all control that community center?
And I also want to give y'all kudos. I think the city's headed in the right direction. I mean, you know, and biggest complaint out here now are the streets. And every time they say something about the streets, I tell them, bide your time. You don't need to fix the streets and then cut them up. Bide your time. So anyway, I think y'all doing a great job. And just keep up the good work and long, as long as, you know, things are going good because I ain't up here.
Are you not recycling that plastic and paper?
All right, next we have, I think, Jewel Gordon or Julie?
Julie Gordon.
Again, please state your full name and your address, please, and what your comment is going to be.
Julie Gordon, 1720 Ricketts Mill Road, Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, 38474. And I'd like to talk about the water rate sheet.
Yes, ma'am. Please let the record show that this address is not within the city of Mount Pleasant, but I think that you do have a very valid point, so I'm going to allow you to speak, please.
You know, I'm a utility user for the water here. And I went back and had requested some information and I got Resolution Number 2009-10, Resolution Number 2013-8, Exhibit 1 Ordinance 2016-982, Schedule 8 Ordinance 2018-1029. Every single one of those have a different category for which was considered the billing. Back in 2009, it was residential in city limits, residential outside city limits, commercial and industrial. By the time we got to 2016, it was changed to residential, commercial and industrial. That was the first day to change. I am handled under commercial, which, when I look at that, I'm like, you know what? Why was it changed from 2013, which had out of city limits, to commercial? So that would be my first question. Nothing, nothing in the schedule outlines residential in cities versus out cities. So, we're being charged at a commercial rate, and I believe there's about 1,200 of us or somewhere around. So I'm not sure why the out of city limits was removed. Also, the deposits are based off of a credit report. However, should there be a matrix on there that clearly defines the credit score versus the required deposit available to the resident? We never see that, I find out. The second, the third thing and final thing is, uh, commercial rates, which are now being set are residential outside of city limits, is charged at 2.5 times estimated monthly usage per the water sheet, city's water rate sheet. And why is that? I'm a, I'm a resident. We don't use nearly what a commercial does.
I've asked Cory and I'll, I'm going to say a couple of words and then I'm going to ask Cory, our attorney, to address this for you because I think she's done a lot of great work on it for us. And this is not going to please you. So I always tell everybody upfront, it's not. I can't speak for what they did in 2013. Nobody on this commission was there at that time, so I don't know what they were thinking.
And I understand that, and I'm not, but what I'm saying is, 2013, they outlined it correctly.
So what we are trying to do now with this ordinance...
Yep.
Okay, tonight is to get it correct. Again, I can't speak for what has happened in the past.
I understand that.
So just please...
No, no, and I understand that, and I will say, I want to go back because I don't think you're understanding what I'm saying. I realize there's a resolution in 2009. You weren't here, whoever wasn't here, I understand that.
None of us.
I understand there was a resolution, which technically should have been ordinance in 2013.
Ma'am, I will not disagree with that.
And I know that...
Oh, we're doing correct...
No, Cory's going to speak for that, that's not correct.
Okay. Cory, would you please start?
But let me finish here. It did outline out city, outside city limits in 2009 and 13, but 2016, which was signed on April 14th, 2016, it just had residential, commercial and industrial. And all of people outside of city limits were assigned to commercial. And in fact, I looked at one of my neighbor's bills and I believe they're probably on industrial when I worked upstairs.
Cory has lots of new decisions.
As for the resolution versus ordinance, I think you talked with Loretta, but the municipal code that, it's like 18125, I think, says that you can change the rates of water and wastewater by resolution or by ordinance. And so, you know, they used to choose to do by resolution, but now this newer administration has chosen to do by ordinance because it gives more opportunity for public comment, things like that. So really, it's the same thing, they're just...
Can I ask a question? Is that the legislature that was passed on 9/1/2009 by the State Assemblyman? Because the State Assemblyman actually defined what should be an ordinance versus a resolution.
Yes, I understand that, but our municipal code is also a, you know, it's passed by ordinance and it says you can do it that way. So I'm not sure, again, I'm not speaking...
So the code here supersedes what the state does?
No, but I have not looked at this ordinance that you're, not ordinance, but statute you're talking about. Do you have the...
I do, I have it here.
What's the codification, like, the TCA number?
Uh, 6-54-512, and it's typed into 2010. It was actually passed in 2009.
Well, I haven't looked at that, but I will tell you, the way they got the authority from in the past was from this ordinance. Again, by the time that any of these people here got here, it was changed by ordinance just because of what we felt was the most, or they felt was the most transparent and gave the public more comment, uh, most opportunity for comment, so.
So this might be important to you guys then because I called MTA and they said that this is what should be utilized because it's the new law.
Like I said, we're passing everything by ordinance, just like this new one. There's an ordinance, it's coming forward and making, and changing these things that you're asking about. But the city position is, if it wasn't changed directly through any of those resolutions or ordinance, I understand that you say it should always be ordinance. But if it wasn't changed directly, then it stayed the same. So that's why this new ordinance says specifically outside city limits.
Can you tell me that again? So, it did change, they actually changed the categories?
No.
Am I missing something?
Yeah, you're not here.
The same, they didn't specifically change those categories when we moved forward in 2016. It was contemplated, but it wasn't, it was not included in the actual ordinance, so.
Well, 2013 has residential, residential out of city limits and industrial. When we get to 2016, they went to residential, commercial and industrial.
Right, so we're saying the residential outside of city limits did not change in the 2016 ordinance.
Maybe it's commercial.
But it's not in there. Because when I read it, I read it as if they changed the whole ordinance and we're in residential.
And that's why we're trying to come back.
That's what we're trying to clarify now. That's why this ordinance is in there, because we're doing that clarification of putting that in there, clarifying, because it didn't get changed, but it didn't get rewritten there, so it stayed at rate.
So obviously, the price, looking back, because there's so many typos, even the sections in the ordinance that are incorrect, I couldn't believe it.
Well, the goal now is to make sure that everything is clear and all in one ordinance. That's why we were coming back there and making other changes to where people were misinterpreting, like, when bills were due or, you know, what a fee was for, or things like that. So it's an ongoing process to try to get it, you know, as clear as possible.
So what about the commercial rate being charged two and a half times for a deposit?
That was in the, oh wait, is that the one that changed last time as well? I haven't looked at that question, too. Can you show me exactly what you're asking?
Uh, commercial rate, uh, there's, which were residential, were considered commercial on your current, uh, current ordinance.
No. You're not considered commercial. You are paying the same as commercial, but you are a residential outside the city. Residential outside the city is the same rate as commercial. It's not on this, are you understood?
See, I'm going to just tell you, people that answer the phone need to be trained because when I talk to them, they say, yeah, you're commercial. This is the frustration people don't plug the cap when they call. And I'm not trying to be ugly or mean or rude, but you know what? When I call, I don't have a hundred minutes to call and ask a question. I just want to know the information when I call. When I call and I say, $22, you know, here it is. I had a problem with my, my, my water, it wasn't registering. So, you know, I called because it's like the right thing to do, you know? So I called, I said, something's wrong. I had a big runaround with the city just to get it, figure out how to get this fixed. And Kate was nice and sent me an email back. But when I have to call and be, like a circle on a wheel, a hamster trying to get through your phone system and find somebody that can even speak to me about this, I don't even feel like calling. It's frustrating.
Well, I can tell you we're addressing all of that.
I sure hope so, I really sure hope so, because it's frustrating and I tried to do the right thing and call and say, you guys are losing money.
Well, I'm, I'm going to, I am going to say something, too, that I wish that the people would come and voice their opinions here and not put it on Facebook like it's been, because that's part of the problem is I spend at least an hour a day clearing up things that are on Facebook that are not and trying to direct people. And I had two people come to me today and thank me for giving them the name directly of the person to go to. One of them was Robert, I don't know if you'll thank me or not, but to go to those people. And one of the things we're trying to do here, Julie, and I've lived here since, um, '88, is trying to get it clarified of what we're doing. And some of these young ladies in here have not ever been here before and trying to get them, and for the poor, the little bit of the money that we pay them, which is not really good, we're getting really, really a lot of work out of them and to do and to take the time. So if you could extend that patience and be sure and come to us, and I'm glad to see you all here tonight, because we, if you look around, there's like four visitors, five visitors here tonight. And this is our means of expressing, um...
Trust me, I'm going to try to tell them every time.
Yeah, and we will welcome that. That gentleman back there with Pat on can tell you how many visitings he was at and I was sitting next to him when I wasn't commissioned.
I just want to tell him he needs to get a pickup truck, I saw those and dump them in the administrator of the...
I'm a bunch of hells.
Yep.
I'll take mine, too, I just see James by there. But doing this, and so, no, it's a process. So if we can help it to put those names of, if you have a water problem, here's who you call and that person, and if you write a note and let it to them so they'll know directly what it is you're looking for. Because it is frustrating and, believe me, when I was building a house here, it was very frustrating.
And that's all I asked for, you know, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be mean or condescending, I'm from the north side, I speak about it.
We're not taking that one.
But I just want to have some information, so I'm not, you know, taking all my...
We have to. Yeah, we have, we have.
We're trying to clean up the mess.
But do you understand what it is, is that commercial rate is you are paying the same thing?
What's the difference between commercial and industrial then?
Oh, you don't want to see very old, you don't want to see that.
No, I know that, but I'm saying the industrial would be like over in that Glen Cherry or Cherry Glen or whatever.
It's the size and the amount that you use and the category of what you're using. Because a commercial can be, like me, I'm a commercial rate.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Renee Cummings. And again, if you don't mind, please state your full name, your address and the reason that you're here.
Good evening, just wanted to say hello. Thank you. Renee Cummings, I live at 403 Haylong Avenue. And I just wanted to talk real briefly, since what we've been talking about and it's communication. I'm not here, I think pretty much everybody's kind of aired the lack thereof in that you folks are working on it, which I really appreciate. I deal a lot with that in my industry. I'm in communication and I work for a wireless company and of course, that's what we do, we work on communication. And so, a little clarification that I would like and that I've gotten a bit confused on is that, let me just say this. And I hear you, Commissioner Blankenship, there's a lot of social media. The city refers, um, a lot of its citizens to private social media pages, which I'm not a really big fan of, but that's at your discretion. Because once you start, to me, once you start breaking away from being something more inclusive than a city is, it's actually coming from the city, things can get lost, misconstrued, misrepresented and miscommunicated. And I see a lot of that. That being said, you can never stop anybody from naming anything city. I can go on Facebook and make my own Facebook page, Mount Pleasant, or whatever you, the case may be. That's the problem, that's the problem, exactly. So with all that being said, um, this is not meant to be derogatory, it's trying to get clarification. I know I have emailed the commissioners before and, um, either I'm, I never get a return email. I have to call back for, or it's a month later that I'll get communication. Sometimes I'll get communication back within maybe a week. It's very sporadic, which I'm not used to, not in my industry. You know, I'm just, you know, it's not that I want to message back right away, but to me, when it gets to a month, to me, it's a little far in advance. I know there's been some communication that I've had with the commission. Mayor White, you said that, um, that basically, and this is the way I took it, could have been misconstrued, but basically, all communication has to go through Kate first.
That's why she's in government, so.
Okay, all right. And that, that's what I want to know. So that way I know I can bypass the commission and I just go straight to Kate.
It's not bypassed, Miss Renee, that's the way ours is set up.
No, and I don't mean it in a derogatory way, you know.
It's not bypassed, we hired her to do that.
Right, no, and that's fine, that's, I just want to understand, so I don't waste your time and I most certainly don't waste my time.
Yeah, your time's important.
Right.
And we get the answers, yeah.
Right, but I can still come here and address the day with a question.
Absolutely.
But this is the forum of do it, because otherwise what you're doing[1598.61]